So.
All right, good.
Yep.
All right, good evening. This meeting is called to order. Uh, first item of business is approval of minutes. We have, well, need, uh, minutes of August twelfth, twenty twenty five, and your motion to approve those, please. Let's move.
Okay.
All right, any discussion?
Was that a motion for all of the minutes?
Just, I think you said number. All right, just, just August twelfth, twelfth.
Okay.
Um, I just have one minor edit on page three.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the top of the page, the third, third sentence. The end of the sentence, it says, as Anne Hess was new to the board, was technically new to the discussion.
Yes. Yeah. All right, is it Nancy?
I do hasn't been.
Yeah. Anybody? No, no further comments?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the, kind of approval of minutes has amended, say aye.
Sometimes you said the motion, and then who was the second for that?
Did I say the question?
Okay.
Those are the August twelfth month.
Yeah.
So I will abstain.
Okay.
That was my idea.
All right, so with all eyes except one. Stand. All right. Need a, uh, so. Next item is minutes of August twenty sixth, if I get a motion to approve those.
Somebody's waiting to be solved.
Second, that's. Okay, any comments on the minutes of August twenty sixth? Okay, any comments on the minutes of August twenty sixth? All right. There's no comments, all in favor of approving the minutes of the twenty sixth.
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right. And last is the minutes of September ninth, I can get a motion to approve those, please.
So moved.
All right, any comments? All right. No comments on those, all in favor of approving the minutes of the ninth, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All right. Now, let's sit four minutes.
Well. Get for approving the minutes.
Yes, yes, and then we have, uh, item C, meeting minute extension or request, so we have a request to an extension of the minutes for October thirteenth. If I get a motion, we'll plant that extension, please. Anybody?
I'll make the motion first, ten, three. Meeting minutes.
Okay, go second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I'll tell.
Aye, aye. All right, and next is, we have some. administrative tasks. So first is a planning board member appointed to the Affordable Housing Committee. Yes, another Carl has, uh, left this, so we decided to take over for, for the Housing Committee, uh, we have any volunteers for that?
It is a very low commitment, they meet quarterly. It is not as though you'd be coming to like multiple meetings a month for this, but we do have to have a planning board member serve in this capacity. Pursuant to chapter four point twelve. Section four point twelve point zero two zero B.
Realistically.
You'd go to four meetings a year.
Okay.
And there, it's from that, well, Mr. Kuntz was trying.
Yes.
How many, how many left, then? Cause you just said this person.
Yeah, so he was appointed on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. So whoever is appointed would complete the remainder of that term, so they'd be there until the J- the second January meeting of the planning board. We're gonna meet once in December. So.
Soon for me.
Okay.
Well, I think I can now. I'm on the score improvement, I have to make sure it's not on the fourth Monday. Whatever, because. When's the next, you said January is?
Uh, the next meeting is December.
December, okay, then. Yeah. I think that will be okay. I can volunteer. Unless. Okay.
Thanks, Charlie, I think you're ready.
That's fine, I can volunteer.
Volunteer for that.
That, I, that's the only other thing I have on Mondays.
Okay, thanks, Michelle, so we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of appointing, uh, Michelle as the planning board, uh, member to the Affordable Housing Committee? Or do I need a motion for that, yes, right?
Yeah, make a mo- have someone make a motion.
Please make a motion to appoint Michelle to the Affordable Housing Committee. So moved.
Same.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Of course.
Uh, planning board recommendation to town council, planning board member to be appointed to Richmond Investment and Commercial Health Task Force Commission. And I'm sorry, so this one meets what, this is Wednesday of every month, meetings begin at four P M?
Yeah, the third Wednesday of every month.
Oh, third, okay.
Uh.
Wednesday of every month.
So what's happening with this one is you're going to be recommending someone to the town council that they will then vote upon, um, so it's your recommendation, ultimately, the council is going to decide whether or not that person will serve in that capacity. I mean, if they were to say no on the recommended person, it would just come back here again, and you'd recommend someone else, and it would just be a circle, basically, until someone is actually appointed.
I have some of the work.
No, I cannot, I do not attend these meetings, um. I cannot, I can, I, I wouldn't wanna opine because I don't know exactly what it entails in its entirety, and I don't wanna say that it does something that it doesn't do, or that it doesn't do something that it does do, um.
Yeah, I know, we discussed it a while ago, when Carl took it on, like, on, so I can't remember exactly what it was, but. So I'm assuming nobody's got the time for that one either, um, I'll, I'll volunteer to take that on, uh, at least, at least for the time being. And if I'm lucky, if you guys vote to appoint me or recommend my appointment, maybe the town council will, not appointment.
But then we might come back here again, and they might try to s- send you back up again, so who knows? Yeah.
Unless anybody else wants it, I'll, I'll, I'll take this one on, so, uh. If I get a motion to provide recommendation of the council to appoint me as the, uh, R I C H Task Force Commission, uh, from planning board.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks.
Second.
All right, did you say, uh?
Up to Michelle.
Michelle, okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right.
Okay, on to old business, um, so we have a continuation of public hearing for Flumner and Latin Review of Perry Hills Conservation Subdivision, Punch Bowl Development Corporation, One Hundred and Eighteen James Street, North Providence. For a six lot minor subdivision with private right of way located in Zero Punch Bowl Trail. Flat five D, last five point one. Uh, five of the proposed lots will be, uh, supporting single family homes, while one closed lots will be set aside as open space for the proposed developments. Uh, so, how you can give us an update on this, and we asked for some more information on the well test from the applicants.
Mm-hmm. So, to sum up that meeting. The applicant agreed to, uh, place transducers in the test wells. To date, I have not gotten any information that has. I haven't gotten any new information in relation to the application, um, about transducers, test wells, anything. Um, the attorney for the applicant is here, I believe that they will have some comments to share with you in relation to this, um. But right now, public hearings continued to tonight, and the decision has been continued to November twelfth. Uh. So. We don't really have anything new to discuss in relation to this application, because there isn't any new material for the board to consider. So, if you'd like to hear from the applicant's attorney, I think that would be prudent.
Okay, great, thanks for that, babe. Good evening.
Good evening, Kelly Fercasit for the applicant. Um, I was informed by, uh, Mr. Ferrari that the transducers were installed on October fifteenth. And, um, he suggested that they remain in place throughout the weekend, I believe that was, um, last weekend, and, uh, after that, they would download and review the findings. And I've heard nothing since. And, uh, because that information isn't something that you can digest immediately. Um. We're gonna have to, uh, just wait till the next meeting for that to be introduced.
Okay, sounds like the well test saga continues.
Yeah, I mean, the, at least that, uh, I can confirm that the work has been done to gather the information. Now it's just a matter of getting it and interpreting it and providing it to the board.
Okay, how, how much time do you feel you'll need, uh, with the understanding that we'll we'll need to report in advance to be reviewed by our, uh, peer, uh, review consultants, and then they'll need to possibly some back and forth, and then we'll need to general the report, we'll need to go to the planning board, and we'll need to see the, the peer, uh, uh, review consultants, uh, you know, remarks before of really and review this and, uh, and make any decisions at the meeting, so.
Um, I don't know, nobody's provided me with that information, um, I expected, I mean, I asked, you know, is the information available, and, uh, I have not heard back. So, um, I can't imagine. Might as well knock out wood here, I hope it's wood, but, um, I can't imagine it wouldn't, would not be available for, uh, the November meeting.
All right, so let's see, our, our November meeting is, is it the eleventh?
The November meeting is the twelfth, because it's on the, it's on the Wednesday, because the eleventh is Veterans Day. Um, we only have two other meetings in twenty twenty five, we have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. The meeting in December is on the ninth, it's back on Tuesday again, because there is a conflicting holiday, um. So.
So we'd be looking at, uh, let's see, extending the public hearing to the twelfth possibly. And then a decision, I'm sorry, you said there's only one meeting, right?
Yep.
That's given in November, so then we want to extend the decision up to the ninth, I think, to be safe. So. So work for, yeah.
Sounds reasonable.
That is best we can do at this point, right?
Yeah.
All right, so someone should make a motion to that effect.
Okay, somebody wanted to make that motion, please. Okay, I'm gonna like, I'm gonna come here next time, there's gonna be a wheel with everybody's making.
Yeah. Yeah.
Four dice or whatever, whatever.
Well, I understand we're making a motion to extend the public hearing that is continued tonight until Wednesday, November twelfth. And then with agreement, the applicant extending the timeline for the decision until Tuesday, December ninth.
That is correct, so if someone wants to say so moved, or if you wanna make the motion, great.
Yeah, if you were that person, all right, okay, awesome, uh, any discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, hopefully we'll see some exciting transducer, you know, uh, data, um, for our next meeting.
Just transducers, transducer data, I have no idea if it's gonna be exciting.
I can't, I guess, you're a hiking geologist or whatever, yeah, okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Uh, Phil. Can, can we ask questions while he's here? It's still an open meeting, right? Yeah, this task questions through you, but he's gonna have to.
Yeah, you know what the.
But now he's left.
So we never closed, we didn't close the we didn't close the.
The public hearing hasn't been closed, you can accept questions.
So yes, we can, we can do that, so at thi- at this point, thanks for inviting me, Bob, but I will um, accept any, anybody who has any question from the public, if you just get up to the podium, uh, give us your name, address, and, uh, let us know what your concerns are.
I think Garrett Stoner, seventy seven Punch Bowl Trail. With all due respect to the applicant, the people who live on Punch Bowl Trail and the planning board. Is, is there no regulation relating to a time limit on a new application, and how long such imagination scope can go on?
John Lieber is, uh, how is?
The answer is no, as long as the applicant continues to allow extensions, the planning board can continue to hear the application, Chris, do you have anything you'd wanna add?
You can, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's to that effect, I, I appreciate you know, all the public that's been coming out every one of these meetings, unfortunately, the, the, the board. You know, we, we're not even aware of this until we literally show up tonight, and then the applicant requests an extension, that's the way it's been working, it's a little frustrating, I, I understand, but appreciate you guys still coming out.
Uh, John Downward, fifty three Punch Bowl Trail, a, a follow up to that. I'm wondering why, um, this agenda item ke- keeps getting put on the agenda without any forward progress, and is there a way for it to only be put on the agenda if there's actually discussion to take place, because it's a, it's a burden on those of interest in this issue to have to keep coming to these meetings when there's no, nothing to be discussed, and maybe the applicant doesn't show up, so. Uh, just in the interest of fairness to the community and those of interest to this issue. Um, it seems frankly absurd that this is continually on the ch- on the agenda with, um, nothing to be discussed.
The answer to that again is no, um, anytime a public hearing is continued, it's continued to a date certain, or else the applicant would have to re-notice, which The answer to that again is no. Um, anytime a public hearing is continued, it's continued to a date certain, or else the applicant would have to re-notice, which. Is an expense that they probably are not interested in incurring, so they're going to continue it to a date certain.
I mean, at this point, this seems like a reasonable burden on the applicant, because this has gone on for years, and at some point. Fish or cut bait, like either you have a project or you don't, if you don't have the project, maybe you should come back later when ready.
Unfortunately, that's not how this process works. It's continued to a date certain.
Yeah, the, the problem, the problem is the planning board, you know, per, per the ordinance, we require this information, we, we haven't received it, the applicant, as Talia said, doesn't. Have a timeframe for providing it. And quite honestly, like I said, we should, I literally showed up, everyone who showed up here tonight. Not knowing for sure what the applicant was going to do, um, because, you know. We weren't informed that there's going to definitely be a request for an extension tonight, so we're in kind of similar situation, but what you said, it, it appealed for you guys.
I guess you would be here anyway, because it's a, it's a scheduled meeting, so again, it just, it seems like an undue burden on the community. Uh, for the process to work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
It seems to me, just kind of courtesy, that if they don't have it, and they haven't sent it to the person who's supposed to come to the meeting to represent. That they would let someone know on the town council, that's a real snub. Let you guys know that that's not gonna happen, you can re- reschedule, you can change your plans, you know, make your agenda shorter. I don't understand why they're not required to do that, it's simple, first of all, it's kind of courtesy, and it makes me. Nervous about how these guys operate, the thing, the next question is, how do we know they're gonna interpret this correctly? They're putting these transducers in, who is gonna interpret it?
Well, we, we are having this information and data reviewed by our peer engineering consultants.
Right. Suddenly happened that they submit, and then the peer review goes again and says. This makes no sense, you're back to square one, I wonder if we can. Catch of the chance.
I mean, it, it's possible, and this has been an iterative process since day one, and, you know, our, our consultant. Along the way has made a number of recommendations, and that's kind of why we're going through a lot of this right now, so.
Yeah, well, they're, they're needed.
Yes.
But it doesn't seem like you really must follow through. That's a little worrisome, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, question on the process.
Okay.
So. Need the motion to extend. Process, just a date in the future. So, if they can't call in, say, I'm absent, because they have to be here in order for that extension to be requested. And voted, is that true?
They can submit a request for an extension in writing, they do not necessarily have to come to a meeting in order to do that, but. The only way that the board can grant an extension of that nature is if they have the acquiescence of the applicant.
And it would remain on our agenda.
Yeah.
Remain on our agenda, the difference is, in the past, we have had uh cons- request extensions in writing, and it's, it, it's gotten onto the agenda as such. So at least the public that has concerns could read the agenda and say. Hey, there's gonna be an extension, so I'm gonna choose not to show up, which makes it a lot better on, on the, the general profile, but unfortunately, as Talia said, there's. There's no requirement in our ordinances to, to do so, I mean. I don't know, maybe, maybe at some point, we've, we, we see if there's some way we can incorporate that as a requirement.
Yeah, I.
You know, people have to come out for this.
Yeah. So do you have, do you have any, do you have a remainder of the question, or was that just the question?
Debate, here's the debate.
I think so, unfortunately.
Yes, Bob.
Um, Sarah, I would have been here anyway, just in case you had wondered.
But, that's a surprise.
But um, since you weren't here last time, Phil, you missed my history on. Well, issues and everything else, but I'm sure you probably watched the meeting.
Yes.
That it just, I wanna clarify one thing, because it was written in this, this week's thing that I'm against. Cluster developments, uh. Conservation designs and compounds, I didn't say anything about compounds, first. Because if a person owns big piece of land, and they wanna have, what a compound is, usually it's family. And they wanna have their kids build a house there, and there's plenty of land. With two acres or three acres or whatever, I have no problems, I, 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 I don't think there's anybody who would have problems with that. My problem with conservation and, and cluster developments is this in a nutshell. When you allow cluster developments and conservation design, especially conservation designs, there is open space that's left. Which is great, it's great to have open space, but the downside is now you are allowing the. Uh, developers come in, put all their houses in a real small area. And it makes it very convenient for the developers, because they don't have to run electricity from here to there to everywhere, they can run the extension cords and build a house next door while they're building this one. There's a lot of advantages, because I did construction before too. Um, there's a lot of advantages to that, but I talked with one of the experts in wells. And water and everything else, and he agreed with me. On that concept, that when, once you, once you allow them to put it in a smaller space where there's wells involved. Now it's like, these were his words, it's like having one glass of water and a whole bunch of people with straws, and that's the issue. That's it in a nutshell. In areas where there is town water. Or town sewer, or both, both is, is better, but I mean, but at least town water. Where the town water is, you have a water tank there, you have a water tank over, uh, over here. You know how many gallons of water are in those tanks, if that started to get to a low, a low level, where it wasn't going to. Be able to sufficiently give people water, you would put water bans on, and you would do something, something to that effect. That's why I have no problems with a cluster development or a conservation design, if there's a place where there is town water. Without the town water, each of us have a hole that's six inches around, like this, and goes deep into the ground, some deeper than others, right? We have no idea how much water is in that pipe, until all of a sudden, your wife at six o'clock in the morning says, there's no water in the shower. That's, that's where this is so important, not to have too many straws in the glass. And that is why I am against conservation designs and developments in our two, our three zones without town wall.
So, so unfortunately, Bob, we, we had, had this discussion, you know, in meetings prior, but, so the conservation subdivision. Uh, that, that is something that this town as a whole, we, we had meetings on, we had, um, we had informational uh sessions, workshops, and. The town as a whole, at least the people that came out, were in favor of conservation uh subdivisions, and we've, we, we enacted that, and that's what we currently have. Now, I mean, is it, is it warranted that we revisited for the, you know, the hydrogeologic issues that you're talking about, I mean. I get, you'd have to, I think you'd have to look at all these explanation subdivisions, the entire town, and see if there's actually. Issues throughout, or if it's just certain areas, but. Um, like I said, that usually, this is the ordinance that we have before us, so at least for. Any application that's before us now, we have no choice, this board can only look at these applications and. Determine if it meets the requirements that we have before us. If you want to, if you want in the future, proposed changes.
Oh, believe me, I've written, I've filled out the surveys and everything else, and I've sent them in with my, with, with my opinion on, on the thing, and the reasoning why. But I can give you a perfect example of one that isn't very good, is that Oak Hill in the back, because that screwed everybody's well so. And they had problems there too, they have, they have several.
That was not a cluster or a conservation development, that was an affordable housing development, one of the town's firsts, and that was over thirty years ago. There wasn't any review or geological, um, you know, checking as we are doing now back in that time.
This was two thousand nine when that went in.
It predates our.
Oak, Oak Hill was the first conservation development in uh Richmond, Oak Hill, Oak Hill Estates.
I will agree to dispute the facts of it, but it was not a conservation development, it was an affordable housing development.
Well, where is the affordable housing in that, if that is an affordable housing?
It's thirty year housing restriction deed has run out, therefore now it is market rate housing.
No, it's never.
Thirty years, it hasn't been thirty years.
You know, Oak Hill, the one adjacent to Punch Bowl and uh.
Clearview Drive.
No, not Clearview Drive, Oak Hill Ridge, um, where the, uh, across from where the glass floor used to be.
Oh, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about Oak Hill Estates.
Yeah.
Talking about two.
That's clear, and that was the first.
Bob's talking about the one off, would be that clear.
Believe me, I got all.
But also, point of water, I'd like to bring this back to the relevancy of the application.
No, I, no, I agree, but, so.
Well, the relevancy is, Bill, Bill said if I, if I knew of ones that didn't work, to bring it up, there's one that didn't work.
Okay, thanks, right, thanks, Bob.
Hello, any more than forty-two punch bowl? Um. First, just to piggyback on what was said in the beginning of the comments, um, on one hand, but it's taking so long, because there's nothing built there yet, but on the other hand, I do agree that. It is kind of ridiculous, the amount of times you all come out just to have it delayed. I don't know if this is answered, but is this, it's not a town ordinance that could be reviewed and modified, it's a state ordinance, like. To require an applicant to request that in writing, so we could all see it on the agenda, is that not a town, is that what was said earlier?
We believe so, I don't, we, we probably have.
I would suggest if it is a town ordinance, maybe it can, there's a lot of ordinances being reviewed now by town council, and everything, maybe. This can be added to the planning board review, ordinance review.
Yeah, we, we do look, we do look.
Not gonna benefit us at all, um, refining lots of things that won't benefit us, but maybe it'll benefit other people in the future. And then, um, on the topic of the transducers, um, I know that Bob Ferrari had also, I think he had mentioned. Um, in, in the feedback he was giving last meeting, that it might be. Also helpful to have data from not only those two wells, but also neighboring wells, and so. Uh, I was just wondering if that is being. If that is being, and I would, we could just have one in our well, but we weren't asked, so I'm not sure if we're supposed to just volunteer or.
We can pass that information along to the applicant. At the last meeting, the applicant agreed to have transducers placed in their test wells. They did not explicitly agree to place transducers and wells of abutting property owners. But I can certainly inquire, and I can certainly inquire with the other questions that have been put forth by the public, um. Whether or not you get a satisfactory response is unknown to me, because I can't answer on behalf of the applicant, but I'm happy to transmit your comments to them.
Hello, Marsha House, forty-five Punch Bowl Trail, I just wanted to clarify, um, so I think it was two meetings ago. I think Phil, you requested that they redo the test on the second well, you remember that?
The, the second well, actually, that was a recommendation, I believe, by our, our, our peer engineering, uh, you know, consultant. That, that, that was not satisfactory, and based on the, based on our consultant's review, yeah, the board, board asked the applicant, and the applicant agreed that it would. Need to be re- redone.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, is that going to be redone, is, are the transducer tests taking the place of that, what's? I'm confused about that.
It wasn't at the last meeting, I thought that, thought that was being done by the applicant, to remember Talia.
To do another test, well, so my recollection of that discussion was essentially that once they had reviewed the information. From both Bob Ferrari and from the well driller, that they did not any longer believe that it was necessary to redo that well test. But I can look into the record again.
It seemed like maybe Bob already felt that way, but Crossman didn't.
I think it was the reverse, I think that it was Crossman who felt that way, and Bob Ferrari who did not, um. And I think that based upon the conversation that Steve and Bob had at the meeting, um. That they thought that it, that was no longer necessary, and that there were other ways to try and figure out that kind of data, but again, I'd be happy to look at the record again.
I think there were two separate issues. That Bob and me and Crossman engineer talked about, and one was they were going to do the transducers in their wells. Um, and what, and Bob, I think, recommended to do. The neighborhood wells for up to at least a week while they ran those other tests, that makes sense, because then we know who's drunk. Well, it'd be at the same time they're drying, they would be drying, just to reiterate.
Okay, that's interesting, but Bob, and Bob, who's their hydrogeologist, made that.
He's, he's not their hydrogeologist, I just want to correct that, he is the, he is retained by the town, he has reviewed material. On behalf of the applicant for the town, he is not retained by the applicant, he has a contractual agreement with the town of Richmond. He cannot serve on behalf of any applicant that comes before the planning board for the duration of his contract.
So who's.
A, A and J Wells, that's who's representing the applicant, that's their well driller, A and J Wells.
They're not professional hydrogeologists, right?
Well, they're well drillers, so, and they've been allegedly sending material for review to other places, and they still, like. For example, they haven't gotten the results of the radon tests back, that was one thing that they had sent out, that we still don't have the data on yet, um. So, to my knowledge, no, A and J Wells is not a hydro geological firm, um, but I think that. My understanding at least, and I could be incorrect, but my understanding is that they were putting forth a suite of, of different professionals to do different things within. Uh, relation to addressing the components of the APod, so. You can have multiple parties employed by the applicant to do multiple things within the same scope of work. Uh, and that's my understanding as to what is happening here with this particular application.
Yeah, I didn't understand, I, for some, I thought that Bob Ferrari was working for the, the applicant.
Well, there, there was some, there were some sentiments expressed on the record that suggested that, but that was in. That was an assertion that should not have been made for the reasons that I just enumerated.
No, he, he even said that if he was, if he was working for his developer, his recommendation would be pages and pages and pages more, way longer. I remember that.
Alright, so just sort of, Crossman's, Crossman's the, the peer reviewer for this project for all things engineering, then.
Yes.
Then what, then what is, what is Bob's role in all of this?
The applicant sent the material directly to Bob Ferrari.
Why?
I do not know, I am not the applicant, I cannot speak to why they have done any of the things that they have done.
See, the applicant paying, it, it's, it almost seems like, it almost seems like the town's donating. Their engineer services to an applicant, that can't be legal.
No, that's not what's happening.
That's not what, that's what it sounds like.
My, my recollection.
Right, if you could straighten this out, Chris, it sounds like a real mess.
I, I don't know, not necessarily.
Okay.
My, my recollection, Mr. Ferrari, because he does so much hydrogeology and. Water work for the town, he was asked questions by multiple people. It's my memory that he took it upon himself to evaluate the situation. He's not representing the town, he's not representing the app. Now, it, like, it's just a larger point, which is, whatever expert information comes in. You are gonna weigh that information, those opinions, you get the final say as to who you give the most credibility to, who you give the most weight to. What information you find the most compelling. So, Mr. Mr. Ferrari's doesn't have a particular client in this. It is unusual.
And probably honestly deceiving today.
I understand what you're saying, but I think if you, if you look at it from the lens of, it's, it's someone with expert ability. And experience that you can use however you wish, obviously Crossman is representing the board.
Okay, so the town is not paying for Mr. Ferrari's services.
That's I understand.
So Mr. Ferrari is doing this pro bono. And. Out of the goodness of his heart, he's just reviewing this for, not the town, because we have Crossman. So out of the goodness of his heart, he's doing it for the applicant.
I, I, I don't know, I don't know his motivation, other than what.
It is, it is very odd, is it not? Generally, we have. Professional consultants. They should, especially at public hearings, they come, a lot of times are sworn in. You know, the applicant's attorney says, hey, you're, you know, you're, you're an expert in the field of hydrogeology, you're representing the applicant, can you, you know, give us a resume, that's what we're used to. And now we've got this information coming from Bob Ferrari that seems to come through the applicant. So it's deceiving to me that I, you know, I've been, I'm on the board, I've been on the board for years, and I'm receiving this information. Believe me, it's blind side of me, I didn't understand this.
You can, as, as, as a single board member and as, as a body collective. You can take that information from Mister Ferrari and you can give it the way you deem best, you can. Analyze its potential bias. Or whether it's not biased at all, or to what level, that's, that's your determination. So you do what you want with Mister Ferrari's information, and you can certainly question him on why he's doing it. Mister Ferrari, why are you doing this? I, I think he's gonna say, well, I was asked so many questions, I just figured I would contribute and help, that may be his motive, I don't know.
Nothing against Mister Ferrari, I got, at least the experience I've had with him on this board and issues, and I have the total respect for him, he's, you know, he's. Extremely knowledgeable, like I said, it's just very odd.
It's out of the ordinary, but it doesn't, it doesn't make him, it doesn't make his credibility any more.
This went to court, somebody had an issue with the decision that the board made. I mean, what, would, would you think? Mister Ferrari would be subpoenaed, and he, what would he say, he would say, I wasn't working for the applicant, I wasn't working for the town. I was just randomly answering questions, wouldn't that sound odd?
If he's giving, if he's, if he's giving an expert opinion.
So he's not giving an expert opinion, then, this is just his personal opinion, it's not an expert opinion, it just so happens. That he's a registered professional hydrogeologist, so happens.
And at, at the hearing.
It doesn't make sense, I'm sorry.
It's okay, if, when he, when he gives testimony. Right? Certainly, there are questions, and we can talk about it all, I have a certain line of questioning on whether or not. You're going to accept him as an expert, you can determine that you're not going to. You can make that determination, say whatever you want.
You can do that for any expert.
Yeah, I guess I, I guess I'd like to have Mister Ferrari at the next meeting where we discuss this material. And ask him specifically, you know, in what capacity does he work in?
Totally reasonable.
Okay, alright, let's, let's.
I think that's a great idea.
Tell you, if you could do that, please ensure that, you know, we have him available before we. Before we make a decision, I mean, we've been going through this for, I don't know how long, well, well over a year. And this thing keeps getting kicked down the road, and now I've got a decision, I'm gonna be basing on information, I don't even know who the hell this guy is, what his capacity is.
All good questions, you can certainly ask him direct.
Okay. I mean, I, I would think that the public, you know, we at least owe it to the public, and we're trying to be transparent here, now, like. Out of left field, I get this curveball, it's like, oh, all the testimony that's being presented and all this analysis. Is just some guy that happens to be a hydrogeologist, said, yeah, he's worked, he's worked on projects and stuff, but like, who's he working? Hurry up.
He was.
Then I'm, I'm done.
He was at the last meeting.
Okay.
Again, no.
Again.
And then.
Go ahead, Mr.
I, I would like to point out, there was a legal discussion of what the board was allowed to require. Of additional information for the applicant, and if pertaining to. We were allowed to ask for more information on the test wells because they were on the property. But we couldn't require testing the butter's property, that would have to be voluntary and arranged between the applicant and the butter.
That is correct.
Okay, that, that makes sense, because we, we, we did that on another application, the one basically across the street there. That's what they did, they did for transducers, I believe, on the wells of the adjacent property owners. Which was very helpful. Alright, yeah, I don't mean to get so worked up, up on my group, but honestly, it was.
One more thing, Phil.
Seemed odd to me.
The uh, Talia is correct in her answer about. The, the second test well, as I was here, and uh, the, their attorney said that. When they get the data and everything else, they don't think it's, it's, uh, they don't think it's their responsibility to have to do that testing. So. The, the two wells were twenty-five or thirty feet apart, whatever they are, they're real close to each other, and they draw from the same fissures, that was in. Uh, Mr. Cabral's presentation. And uh, they're drawing from the same fissures, my, my question about one of the wells, the well that they stopped the testing on prematurely and everything else, they never completed that. Well test as far as all of the information that I read. So, I don't think that the applicant can just say, I don't think we need to test again, I think it means.
And that, that is odd too, I did, I missed the meeting, I did. I did go over, you know, the meeting minutes and everything and the material, but I missed that, because I. I remember the last meeting I attended, then we received those test results, and our Crossman, our peer engineering, you know, consultant reviewed it. And I believe it was Steve, I think I asked him a pointed question, I said, so Steve. Would you say that? The applicant has not met the requirements for doing two well tests, and then he has to do the other, other one again, or do another one, he said. Yes, definitely, and we looked straight at Kelly, the applicant's, uh. Um, you know, attorney, and he says, yes, we, we concur, we, we will do it, I believe, that's what he said. And then all of a sudden, the next meeting, now all of a sudden, it's all changed.
See what happens when you take a day off?
Yeah.
I don't know.
He hadn't say that.
But anyways, Talia was correct in, in what she said about that. And I just think that, I don't know, who the heck are you to say?
I'll tell you what, it gets to a point where, um. If we don't get the information we're looking for soon enough, I think this board's at a point where we're gonna find, you know, it's up to the board, we can reach a decision based on the information we have. And if the applicant doesn't like that decision, well, so be it, because this is.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would, I would caution you.
I, I am gonna say it, man, so I've been doing this for thirty years, and believe me, I had applicants that work with this, and I've had applicants that don't.
You don't wanna stand this prejudice to an application.
Not prejudice, I'm saying, I am just saying, the applicant has not been meeting the requirements. Even though we've been doing everything we can to try to nurse them through this, but that's all I'm going to say. Alright, with that, um, any other comments, questions from? Anybody?
I guess I can.
Do we have anybody online?
Nobody has, it's already gone over.
I'll be very brief, Jennifer Day, who I told them on Punch Bowl. None of us received a letter from the applicant asking if we'd be willing to put any test mechanisms in our well, that was a recommendation made by Crossman. And it's great to know that he would be interested in doing that, we would consider it, but just to. I, I want the planning board to know the spirit of um communication from the developer, has it been? You know, um, really what we would like it to be, and I just wanted to add on the record, so.
Do you have anybody online?
We do not.
Okay. Alright, I think we've, we've already had a motion, right, we don't.
Nope, nope, you can just, yep, you can just move on to the next agenda item.
Alright, on to new business, thank you. First item of new business is advisory development.
Want to just wait a second, so people who are going to leave can leave, so there's not the sound of the door.
Uh, let's just keep it going.
Okay.
Alright, that's, I think it'll be quiet. Alright, so first item of new business is advisory development plan review, town Richmond, five Richmond Townhouse Road, Wyoming, Rhode Island. Uh, for property located for Richmond Townhouse Road, Wyoming, Assessor's Place, succeed, let be king. So this is one of the town's properties.
Yes, indeed, so.
It's easy on that.
So this is just advisory development plan review. So per the town zoning official Josh Jordan, the recreation area proposed for four Richmond Townhouse Road must undergo advisory development plan review before the planning board. Pursuant to Title eighteen, Chapter eighteen point zero four, Section eighteen point zero four, point zero three zero A. This section of the zoning ordinance reads town uses of a governmental nature in the P U B zoning district. And other town uses operated or maintained by the town on property owned or leased by the town, or in structures owned or leased by the town. Shall be exempt from the requirements of this title, provided, however, that if construction of a building or enlargement of a building footprint is proposed, if a change in use. Of a building is proposed that would require alteration of the site, if a parking area is being expanded, or a relocation of street access point is proposed, the plans shall be referred to the planning board for advisory development plan review. As construction of a building is proposed, the plans have been referred to the planning board for advisory development plan review. The planning board previously provided an advisory opinion to the town council in relation to rezoning the subject property to the P U B zoning designation. Per zoning official Jordan's verbal guidance provided on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The planning board's advisory development plan review decision will not appear on a future council agenda for action. Interim town administrator Erin Lees will be in attendance on behalf of the town in relation to this application. To address any questions that the planning board may have, she collected the materials that have been submitted to the planning board for your review. And so beyond that, um, you'll see that there is a. Small packet that I put together, which just has some comprehensive plan consistency concepts for your consideration. As part of your decision, and then also the section of Rhode Island General Law forty-five, twenty-three, sixty, which has been required to findings. So again, even though. Your decision is not going to go to the town council for action, you still want to render a decision that is sound. So. Uh, if you have any questions about what has been proposed, again. Ms. Lees is here, but if you do not, you can look at the proposed plan. It is in about the middle-ish of that packet.
Oh, I know, you're seeing it on your screen, I didn't get it in the email. Do you want to enter the site plan?
Well, that's sort of the site plan.
Site plan, okay.
Oh, the site plan, I got.
That was part of the package.
It's, wow, page fifteen and sixteen of F one. Okay.
You're, you're the one, you're the one person I had hoped was, yeah, you know, it was open the arch, it's such a look at it.
Thought, and I always saw one page, I don't know why.
Yeah, it's way to get out of the bottom of the plants, yeah.
Sometimes it takes a while for it to load, but. I'm so glad I've started naming all of the attachments. Should be making it, yes. That was the request of the board, so happy to. Alright, are we set to jet? Do you have the plans?
Percent.
You see them? Okay, very good.
We called, we received the site plan the night of we were doing the zoning advisory.
Yes, yes, it is the same plan, no, it has not changed, it is the same plan. Totally fine.
I look at too many screens all day long, so.
Totally fine, totally fine. So, do you have any questions?
Looks pretty straightforward, so is this, Aaron, is this, we're just providing kind of like a shell, like. I didn't see any, there's no electrical plans for the interior, there's no lighting on the plant.
It's going to be um electrical hookup for the bathroom facilities and lighting. Um, most of it is a freestanding, uh, it's meant to be a timber brain building with. Two bathrooms that will not be heated, so they will be um shut for the winter. Um, plumbing, electrical, and a small utility area is going to be located in the concession. Previously, this, this project is a long time project, and. Um, a prefab was looked at for the bidding purposes, or for the financial planning purposes for the allocations. However, after review of that, this project specifically, it was rewrapped, so it could be built or prefabricated. Some of the prefabrication requirements does have a heavy lift for whoever the general contractor will be. Phase one is this pavilion structure, bathroom facility, septic. Um, a handicap parking area outside it. Very light landscaping and um two rain garden retention areas towards waterline hookup as well as electrical.
Right after the actual site plan, there should be two sheets of a somewhat conceptual plan of the structure itself.
Yeah, in a sense, yeah, like, there's no interior electrical at all, so is that, is the contract direct? So. This bid package, assuming. The interior electrical and the plumbing's being done by someone else, so.
So, we're currently out of bid, and it's for general contracting services to build this um to specifications, including septic design installation. Um, and comprehensive of all utility inputs. But they're gonna.
Design built, so, okay, so. Yeah, it'll just be like whatever, minimal, many seat code for lighting, for receptacles, nothing special. And exterior lighting, is there exterior lighting on this?
I don't believe there's any proposed exterior lighting besides under the shell of the non-closed inside, so ceiling lighting, but I don't believe there'll be. Flood lighting on the site um from the pavilion. There might uh be consideration as we look at the lighting general in the four and five Richmond Townhouse area to have some overhead lighting for. Lighting up that lot for events.
Okay, well, I just need to make sure that. If there's any lighting, that it, it applies with our ordinance for dark, dark sky compliant lighting. We don't really want to be an embarrassment, people coming in here trying to comply with our ordinance, and there's these giant floodlights shining back at us.
Interesting, yeah.
Uh. And board members have questions?
The, the building, the contractor is responsible for making it ADA compliant, I didn't see anything that looks like a handicap ramp or anything, so. Just uh, um, it'll be built at grade.
It will, yes. That's it, the handicap parking area is right there, that is gonna be paved, the rest of the portion of the lot is gonna remain. Um, pretty rough grade. Um, at this point, we didn't want to pave the area as this is phase one, and um we didn't want to limit ourselves for our further phases. But outside the pavilion area, I think it's proposed four parking spaces will be um paved. Looks like they're showing three pronounced, right, one will be a seven, yes. And there's already a, I assume, there's, are there any birds over there?
Birds?
No birds, it's all been.
No, right, yeah, that's gonna be, if you see where the site is, there is a significant, on the top of it. Initially, discussions had occurred that it be a little higher up, obviously, construction costs are going to be expensive, and we didn't want to. But, but we also didn't want to front load the lot to um minimize our parking, because we utilize that for a lot of large events. Uh, it's proposed, it is staked out, I don't know if anybody was able to go and see it at the um. Holiday, uh, at the harvest festival, but the, the locations are currently combed and staked off, and it will align nicely. With the backside of the charitable furniture, so it will, we believe, tuck in nicely and be structurally to the area.
Any other questions? Man, seems pretty straightforward to me.
Any issues with DOT because of the rotary one thirty-eight and one twelve beam state roads?
No, so, and that's uh why that site was also chosen, is the curb cut will probably. Um, remain where it is, and that's why those retention on your poles at the front. As well as, you know, the water lines aren't even brought under the road, so there's no um further disturbances there at this time, so. So far, we have not received anything, and um stormwater on site coming off one thirty-eight. Is, is fine, you look at initially, when you looked at for Richmond, um. Now that the rotary is complete, um. A large parcel is sale, but that doesn't appeal, we don't leave the future of project, um. But it does limit access from the one thirty-eight side, so.
Well, the rotary is confusing enough as it is, even though, you know, it's been here for a while, it's still confusing to local and visiting traffic.
Nope.
Well, there's a lot of people that seem to not know how to use a rotary, that's.
But the exit is, is, is almost directly across from the driveway here.
So the, the curb cut is between. The. By retention pods?
No, so the curb cut, it's, it's, it's very similar to where it is now, the large pine tree that we utilize for the crossing. It's gonna be on the other side of that. Um, we wanted to leave between the two access points. Um, the water connection certainly is gonna go, goes there anyway, but we wanted to leave that and set it back from the adjoining property. To ensure that we could get um any kind of safety vehicles up there for future phases or build outs.
So it's kind of where the electric lines.
Right, then we can.
Okay. Those, not directly across from this driveway. Here.
It's, I would say it's. I would say it's pretty close, it's a little adjacent.
Imagine a backwards S. No, so here's, here's where we en- enter and exit and then a little bit, a little bit down, not directly across, but a little bit.
Anything else?
I have one question, um, are there any things to do like a crosswalk with more? Like permanent crosswalk, so when we do have the larger events, it'll be more cohesive?
We'll have to have conversations with DOT on the installation of that, but certainly, um, as we have events there, that's being built that.
And are you saying crosswalks from?
You mean painted, um, painted on pavement? Anything else? All right, this will be the motion, uh, something like the, uh. Favorable recommendation for advisory development plan review.
So you'll want to say how it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and then you're going to want to say. Um, that it comports with the required findings of forty-five, twenty-three, sixty. And as previously noted, I've given you some conceptual ideas for what it could be considered consistent with in the comprehensive plan. You're of course welcome to choose different ones than what I have proposed, I've just put this together, so you would have something to consider.
I think the ones you provided are all relevant and uh, thank you.
You're welcome. This one was pretty easy, because. Recreation, open space type thing, so.
All right, who would like to give it a try?
Motion makers.
I know we can't all look at Pete now and go, Pete, make a motion. Carl, make a motion.
I would be a motion maker if I was coached.
Say I make a motion to provide a positive advisory opinion or approved, actually no, not even. Advisory opinion, since it's Advisory Development Plan Review. I make a motion to approve the Advisory Development Plan Review application. Consistent with the. Goals and policies. Numerated in the document provided by the planner and also note that the application is consistent with forty-five, twenty-three, sixty. It's the second page, where the highlighting begins.
Make motion prove the advisory development plan review as presented by. Erin Lees. Our town clerk. Town of Richmond by Richmond Townhouse Road, where I'm in Raleigh, two hundred and twenty-two, applicant and owner of property located at four Richmond. Townhouse Road, where I'm in Raleigh, two eight nine eight, Cessers Platte, six, C lot eighteen, as a decent quarter miss. Bound in forty-five dash twenty-three dash. And it's that procedure.
And is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And its goals and policies as presented by our planner. All right, so a second. Thank you. Uh, the, uh, any further comment? Right, all in favor?
Thank you, Erin.
All right, uh, let's see. New business item two, planning board recommendation to the Town Council, discussion recommendation of draft amendments of the code order to this title eighteen zoning. Chapter eighteen point sixteen, use regulations for special use permits. Criteria in code of ordinances, title eighteen zoning, chapter eighteen point twenty dimensional regulations.
So I took a completely different approach with the special use permit process. So in the intervening weeks between when the Planning Board rendered its advisory opinion to the Town Council. For amendments to chapter eighteen sixteen of zoning ordinance and today, when I wrote this, it was October twenty-third. I listened to the Town Council's October seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting, and I also attended an Economic Development Committee meeting. With uh, the Planning Board Chair, Phil Damesis. Based upon the Town Council's discussion and the feedback that Chair Damesis, I apologize, it's a commission, not a committee. But going back to that, um, the feedback that Chair Damesis and I received from the E D C, I have drafted some completely new amendments. To chapter eighteen sixteen for the Planning Board's consideration. I've concluded that some of this quote-unquote specific and objective criteria that I had drafted could apply to specific use codes generally outside of the special use permit context. I have discussed special use permits with Senator Sangari and expressly asked him if the town needed to have special use permits. Or if uses could simply be permitted or prohibited. He explained that the town does not need to have special use permits, this concept has informed my drafts, so I gave you four different versions. The first version is all SRX. The first version is essentially any use that was previously permitted with a special use permit would become prohibited. I drafted this version to serve largely as food for thought. For the Planning Board to better understand the Board's more specific appetite for prohibiting specific uses. The next version is all SRP, which is the second version, uh. This means that any use that was previously permitted with a special use permit would become permitted by right. Again, I drafted this to serve as food for thought for the Planning Board, uh, it does not include criteria based upon specific use codes. Then there is all SRP and there's an entirely new section, which has criteria based upon use code and not zone. So the third version, um, this means that any use that was previously permitted with a special use permit would become permitted by right. While also creating criteria that would need to be achieved for specific uses regardless of zone. As I considered the comments from the Council and the E D C, I thought, wouldn't it make sense to require traffic studies? Slash proof of licensing slash manure management plans slash submission of information pertaining to water sources and usages. For specific uses generally, why should a traffic study be required for a use in one zone and not another? So then I thought about the kinds of uses that I thought would need traffic studies or loading plans or parking plans, the kinds of uses that I thought would require state or federal licensing. The kinds of uses that I thought would need manure and or animal waste management plans and the kinds of uses that I thought would require more water than others. And then I reviewed chapter eighteen sixteen, section eighteen sixteen zero point two zero, use code descriptions to really understand. What each of these use codes would entail, some uses encompass more than they would seem at first glance. Of course, the Planning Board could add additional criteria for, like example, uses only permitted on arterial roadways or amend use codes that would be subject to the graphic criteria. I tried to incorporate language that the Planning Board seemed to approve. It's important to note that even if these amendments were enacted, a prospective applicant could always seek relief from the proposed requirements. Ultimately, what I'm trying to do is make something that is palatable to both the Planning Board and the Town Council. The final version is the version that you will be familiar with, because it is. The, um, it is basically the special use permit criteria with additional. Criteria for the uses that the Planning Board previously suggested or recommended to the Town Council to be prohibited. That they rejected, so as a result, I've made specific and objective criteria for private technical trade school. Cemetery, child or adult daycare for nine or four more persons, fairgrounds, place of worship, private club. Theater or other indoor privately owned public gathering place, stadium, arena or other outdoor privately owned public gathering place. Power generation, broadcast studio antenna, towing with vehicle storage, fuel sales and delivery, car wash. And warehouse sales with outdoor storage. So the E D C has provided us with some comments for the Board's consideration, which have been included in your packet. So it is ultimately your task, and I know that you're familiar with this by now, because we've been going through this special use permit discussion for quite some time, but. Um, in your findings and recommendations to the city or town council. You're going to have to include a statement on the general consistency of the proposal with the comprehensive plan, including the goals and policy statements. And um, also a demonstration of recognition and consideration of each of the applicable purposes of zoning as presented by forty-five, twenty-four, thirty. So you can recommend any of the versions provided, or you can meld various components of it together. Then I put in gigantic letters, please review the comprehensive plan and Rhode Island General Law before you come to the meeting. Please consider how the proposed amendments the Board will recommend to the Town Council are consistent with the comprehensive plan and the purposes of zoning. And then I gave you a very basic kind of structure of a motion. So, once we have concluded this component of the exercise. You'll have an idea of how the motion can be formulated, so. I don't know if you have questions about what I've drafted, I know I just gave you a lot of information. I know I gave you a lot of different things to read, um. So, I don't, I don't know how the Board feels about the new approach that I've taken, and you might love it, you might hate it. You might love part of it and hate part of it, I don't know. But I'm trying to come up with. Creative ways to address these issues that, again, will be palatable, at least in my thought, to both the Planning Board and the Town Council.
And I'd just like to add that the, the new that Talia and I have with the E D C, um, you know, the, the Chair of the E D C, Gary, he, he. The question that we just made was one of the things, their, their main concern, I think Talia was, was right, is that. They didn't, they didn't want too many restrictions on, on economic development and by. By having things as prohibited uses, um, or even possibly special use permit with too much restrictions. So they, they, they felt in some cases it was going to restrict development where they felt we didn't need to. Uh, Talia and I both explained that. Based on the changes that the state made, that we were kind of forced into this, where. If we did, if we had any special uses that we didn't have criteria for, basically they're permitted uses. So that's, that's what we, not really rushed it, but we focused on what we felt was most important with the idea that. Hey, we could pick up some of these other uses later if we need to, that we didn't necessarily. Think that we absolutely had to prohibit these uses, but we wanted to give ourselves some time to at least get special use criteria in place. Um, so I think that's what we explained to them, but that, I think that was, that was the primary thing that came out of the E D C is they, they, they just wanted. Particularly place like Shannon, they didn't want to limit some of the, uh. Some of the things that we were prohibiting. And I'm assuming that the council is similar to that, their concern is primarily driven by. Restrictions to economic development, that's their main concern, is that true?
They had questions about proposed lot sizes and they had questions about dark sky compliance and they had questions about. Uh, traffic studies and. Essentially, I think what they were looking for was maybe more information from the Planning Board as to why certain uses were going to become prohibited. Uh, I know that the Board has spent a lot of time discussing these very issues, but I think again that the Council was looking for more information. Um, but the, the, the sense that I was getting. From reviewing the meeting was that I think that the council is. More inclined to allow uses as opposed to prohibit uses. But that's just my, my understanding from reviewing the tape, I was not in the room. Chris was, so he may have some additional comments.
I'll just add to what, um, the planner has said, which is all correct. It wasn't that they were. Um, necessarily against, or they're not, not necessarily they want more information. It was, I think it was a little more refined, which being, if you're going to put, let's say, a two acre minimum on a certain use in a certain zone. Why are we saying it has to be a minimum two? Why can't a house of worship be on a half an acre, maybe it's just a smaller house of worship? Um, if it's going to be required dark sky compliant, well, is that really necessary, why? Now, that I say they're against it, but do we, in other words, justification for some of the criteria. I think that's what they were looking for, and if.
Okay.
Assuming that if it, if that was there, they would agree with it. But just kind of arbitrarily, I'm using, that's my word. They felt, I, I met feeling they thought it would be arbitrary for them to put those minimums when. Let's say the planning board, the zoning board doesn't know size and scope of the potential operation.
Possibly the, you know, the size restriction, I could see that, I, I would think by this point that. That, that the council should understand the justification behind dark sky compliant lighting, the, the bottom line is we don't want glitter, we don't want lighting trespass, that's just. That's just common sense, I don't know why we have to explain that to the council.
Then a major Atlantic, um, migratory bird pathway. And we have significant wildlife areas with significant species of concern. In the community that are sensitive to light, which is, we adopted that, I don't know, around ten, fifteen years ago.
Yeah, that's, that's just, that's just.
International Dark Sky Association dot org is where they.
But was that just an example, or did they actually say that?
No, that, that, that was an example that I do think I'm saying, if anything, by interpretation. I'm not arguing dark sky. But any type of restriction or, not even restriction, but a requirement. That is going to add potentially a burden or a cost, just want to know why. Um, maybe if it's a, uh, a, a small bakery in a neighborhood residential. Does it need to be dark sky compliant, how much lighting are they going to have?
Yes, it does.
Everything is site specific and that's the hard part to say, generally. You want a church in the neighborhood that gets along with its neighbors, but you can't say what size it's going to be until someone comes in and asks for that. That's the whole point of special use permit, I know I'm lecturing to you, but it means the use has certain things that may not. Fit in certain places, it may be fine everywhere, but maybe there's just one place where. You need to have a little bit more review and you need to give the abutters notice something different from their homes is going to happen.
Right, the other thing that Talia and I explained to the E D C. Is that when we look at like these, these ordinances and we're going to allow certain uses and prohibit others. We're, we're also looking at like the big picture, the comp plan and like when we say. And we really want to focus like our commercial and industrial businesses. Off of like around the, around the exits and down there and. And then we start looking, okay, then how much inventory of like commercial land do we have, do we have enough? Land to support that, and if the answer is yes, then we probably don't have to like push development to like. The villages in Shannon, I was trying to explain that to Gary, it's not like, not arbitrary, it's like it. We, we, we look at, we look at the big picture and it's like, it's sound plan in practice, so. Yeah, it's not like they were saying, we don't want a church in Shannon, um, like Nancy said. Yeah, if it was proposed to us and we have special use permit, well, then it's, we're, we're going to look at it. Oh, it's a small little church, there's like twenty people and okay, what's the traffic look like, oh, it's negligible, okay, we're not going to kill you. With a, an elaborate traffic study, but then the same sense, we have to. We have to, as the planning board, we have to assume worst case, that somebody's going to come in and put a. Thousand person church in Shannon, and like, we have to be protected for that.
I'm not arguing with you. These were the, these were the things that were discussed, but.
Yeah, and even. Even beyond this particular element, um. You'll note that the agenda includes another section, which I've also included. Which has a specific reference to the, um. The dimensional regulations, because the dimensional regulations state. that dimensional regulations for special use permits are determined by the zoning board of review unless specifically set forth elsewhere in this title. So I thought that because so much of the special use permit discussion revolved around having specific like, frankly, we could have more criteria for all of our special use permits for our different proposals of, you know, these are what the dimensional regulations are going to be, and this is the minimum lot size. But I thought that that would probably make all of us probably go insane. So instead of trying to establish different dimensional regulations for every single use, I suggested that um, it could be amended. But it again will really depend upon what the planning board wants to do about special use permits. If you want to allow a special use permit, yep, go ahead.
I had to, you, you get into something that's very good, right? The, the dimensional portion, right? So if we have, if you approve something, it says uh, cattle, right, livestock, minimum three acres, let's say, if you take them. Someone only wants to have, you know, one or two head of cattle, you know, for personal consumption. Now we have an acre to have, they get dimensional variance. Way to, way to the planner set it up, and then they wouldn't have to meet that minimum because they came before planning or zoning, they could say, we're only gonna have this one head of cattle. We don't need three acres. We can do it because you are right, agriculture says you only need one point one per head and we have one point five, and then you would give that discretion to the planning board, so. Through the dimension on that. So that's one way to deal with it. It's, it's very good.
And that's apparently what we do for people that want horses for their own recreational use on your property. We've spent ages on that with planners that's because it was a huge issue in one neighborhood where the lot was less than an acre and whether or not the neighbor shouldn't be allowed the horse. It was a huge issue, but it took a lot of time.
What a Phil Town Hall, what he had most on the agenda and wins.
Now, like Nancy said, we went through, it, it was pretty laborious. And then of course, I wasn't just horses. It was, yeah, it was, it was, there was pigs and chickens and you name it. Coming up with, you know, units for, you know, how many units can you add for an acre and?
Yeah, I had, I had an eight hour zone, you know, I'm two beef cattle. That, that example was that actual was real and and part of the stuff's done, less than required acres, whether or not you live by special age. So that, that, that is a way to deal with that, where you give for both boards some discretion being modified and then you very reasonably said, so yes, there's a minimum, however, there is the opportunity to see the dimensional variance along with that in our limits, so that if we can address it to specific circumstances.
But of course, that really depends on if you even want to allow special use permits. If you don't want to allow special use permits and you just want things to either be permitted or prohibited, then you wouldn't necessarily have language that says the, you know, the planning board will review dimensional regulations for special use permits because they'd be, you'd be looking at dimensional regulations for something that doesn't exist. Uh, so I, I'm really not even getting a sense from the board right now how you feel about any of the versions. Um.
Well, I am not for things that are permitted as of right because it's all location, location, location. Um, we live in a very large town that has a lot of differences. We have zones that were developed in, um, the comprehensive plan explains why we have the zones that we have. Um, you know, we talked a lot about the last go round on the permitted, not permitted use table with planner, um, what was Sean's last name?
Let's see.
Me, and um, Solicitor Ellsworth, um, we talked about like brewery, having a mini brewery or brewery in the town. And we learned that the most toxic thing coming from a brewery is it's septic. And even DEM, the Agency of State Jurisdiction for On-Site Waste Border Treatments kind of goes, gives a, a cross fingers approach to it. Um, so there was a lot of research in our tables in what we had. Um, my inclination is to stay with the special use permits as something we're familiar with. I don't want to throw the baby out in the bath water. Do what's minimal required to meet the zoning enabling law changes and let the dust, dust up. Because guess what, folks? There's gonna be another round of changes coming up this session that starts in January. We're gonna have more work to do just to be in compliance. Um, I also have a personal opinion on all these wish lists for economic development. We want a corporation, we want a bank, we want to have this big company come and move in. Where's the land? And the market drives what's gonna locate in our community. We are wonderfully benefited by the highway exit. And I think when we did our comprehensive plan, what survey showed to us was is that's where people thought the development should go. And every public hearing I've sit in, even when it's residential development going to residential development, people who were there in phase one don't want the people in phase three. They don't want change. They want to see, this is my neighborhood, keep everything alive, my neighborhood. I'm in the barn, shut the door and be done with it. So I'd like to go forward with the um, drafted SUP criteria option for what the town council rejected on our original recommendation and have criteria for that, and then stop and pause and see where we're at and what, what else needs to be done for compliance.
And yeah, I feel that way also. We've, the, the special use permit for me was always something that, like, when we sit here these long nights putting together permitted uses versus non-permitted uses, private uses. The special use permit was always that placeholder where you, you look at something, you say, well, could we allow that whatever in Shannick Village and like, and then we all sit there and say, well, a big maybe, and then we sit around, well, if it was like this, it was like that. So then we end up saying, well, let's do it through a special use permit because that will give us a chance. If someone does propose to do it, they're gonna come before us and we're, we're gonna have this criteria to judge it by and, you know, we, we, we don't have to just say it's permitted. And, and I think if anything, that kind of, it kind of helps economic development because otherwise a lot of times we would have to say it's prohibited, I think.
I'm, I'm a strong supporter of local businesses. Grow your local businesses first before you bring new ones into the town. Somebody who wants something that doesn't quite fit in has always the amendment procedure to go through.
And, and that's another thing. We've been very receptive to zone changes even. And if, if we have, if we have a large like economic development opportunity, somebody comes in and they say, hey, we want to do this great thing for the town. It's gonna be awesome revenue for you guys. And we want to put it here, but like your zoning doesn't allow it. Well, we've already shown like the, the preserve, we literally created an entire new zone for the preserve overnight. One, one meeting, we literally wrote that zoning ordinance or roughly a development of eight hundred acres. Like, so we're very receptive to this stuff and it can be done. It's not that difficult. Now, I do understand like the EDC, like Gary, you were saying that the concern is with the small businesses, like a large business like the preserve, you had them come in and they got attorneys, they got engineers. The smaller businesses may not have that. But in the same sense, we talked about like a lot of the waivers that, you know, small businesses can get, like, I don't know, we had the uh, Patlog's dog, uh, you know, that, that business came in. And we granted them a number of variances or, or waivers, right, to uh, your development plan and review and because like quite a, it just didn't make sense for what they were asking for, so.
Another example is when they wanted to convert the car wash into the now liquor store, bakery, little restaurant. We gave them a lot of waivers on that process as well.
Right. So there are, there are vehicles to like, to still be receptive to small businesses and not like, just, just because we, we haven't written, a lot of this is to protect us from, you know, really from uh, I don't know, from a growth that is just not, not controlled. It's just not managed and.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like you and Ms. Hassan, and maybe Ms. Berenek and Ms. Martens, well, I'm sure, are in favor of the third version.
That'd be the fourth version.
Fourth, yes.
With the actual new specific criteria, that would be in line with the zoning enabling. Is that, am I?
Yes, thanks, thanks for being a, a facilitator.
Do you, how do you feel about that fourth version that the, that the planner put great detail and time into? How do you feel about what's been her proposed language?
I, um.
I guess what I'm asking is, is that, is that language something that you would uh, pose to the town council? That you would say, yes, we, we give this a positive recommendation, town council?
Now, personally, I'm, I'm fine with that. Is the other question, so just so to put this in, to perspective, we're, we're, we're looking, count, council is like, are they really, they, they want this to happen ASAP, right? They want.
Well, this is, does, this does need to happen, talking about many times. It's not um, it needs to happen.
Definitely choose.
It would be great.
That version. Is that the one that is including all the specific and criteria? Um, what's the other word? Specific and?
Objective.
Objective. Objective criteria.
Um, and so that's the, what you wrote up. And so just to be clear, we changed, we reverted all of our prohibited back to special use. And then criteria were made for those. That's what I saw. Correct.
So it was reverted, not.
Are we, the one that town council, the recommendation?
Yes, if the recommendation which had been pro, had said it was prohibited, I went back and I changed them back to S's and then I added.
That we had been working on.
It's the district use table as it stands now.
Okay.
With an additional section that has the specific and objective criteria.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to, I didn't, I checked it, but I didn't check every single S compared to the one that I printed in April. Um, but that's what it appeared to me. Okay.
And I, and I think if I could add, um, does Gillette tell me if I'm correct? That starts on the attachment at page one thirteen of one forty eight, which is eighteen point six eight one zero, zero, and then it gets into posed criteria.
I do not know the specific page number, but it is the last section.
Page, page one thirteen, is that right?
Which file? Um, I've been revised eight, chapter eighteen, twenty sixteen, drafted SUP criteria.
Yes. Yes, I tried to give them each very specific individual names so that it would be easier for you to be able to go, okay, this is what this one was, this is what that one was. Yes.
So to follow up with my clarification tonight, are we also approve or voting or something on these criteria?
Yes, you can do that. Yes. If you like that criteria, yes. If you want me to change that criteria, also fine. If you want to look at all the criteria that we've put together so far and go, no, 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 no. Yes, 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 no, yes, no, 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 yes, yes. That's also fine.
Pretty happy with this. And could, could we spend another six months in workshops on this? No, no doubt. And then we'll give an advisory.
We could spend the rest of our lives talking about special use permits.
Most likely get bounced back again, but I'm, I'm okay with with the revision that you presented to us tonight. I, I would, I would send that back to council with the, you know, recommendation, um, and then, and then take it from there.
But Mr. Chairman, one more thing is, is the part of the recommendation is Gillette people also about the the ability to get a dimensional variance in conjunction with that.
Well, it would be, so the way that I wrote the agenda is that you're both discussing eighteen sixteen and eighteen twenty. So if you want to, um, if you, if you want to make it so that you as a planning board make determinations on the specific dimensional requirements for uses that are permitted by special use permit, you can do that because um, right now.
And if the unified development plan we do.
Yeah, so basically, yeah, so basically what I wrote is um, it's under one title eighteen, chapter eighteen twenty, section eighteen twenty point zero two zero B could be amended to read. Dimensional regulations for special permit uses are determined by the zoning board of review or the planning board when the application is subject to unified development plan review pursuant to forty five twenty four, forty six point four, unless specifically set forth elsewhere in this title. So basically that would allow planning board to establish the dimensional regulations for uses that are permitted by a special use permit. Yeah, under un, under unified development plan review. Yes.
Reports on, and this on, be able to grant a dimensional variance or some of the minimums that are here based on the facts and circumstances.
I think that they could. I don't know if that necessarily needs to be written down explicitly. Um, because I think that you can seek it under state law, you can seek a dimensional variance. Um.
Yeah, I agree. This is the reason I ask. It was a Supreme Court case that came out a couple of months ago that it's a, the dimensional.
Mm-hmm.
And whether or not it's allowed in different towns, have it allowed in different, yes, you can get dimensional variance from this required. Um, so if there's a way to put it in, it's helpful to the planning board and the zoning. So it's expressly in there and it's not up for interpretation, I can be debated. If that's what you want.
I think it's a good idea. It, it's like one stop shopping. The applicant, applicant submits, you have all the applications for the use that they want and the relief that they need.
What would that look like, Chris? What would the language be? I'm putting you on the spot right now.
Yeah, no, that's okay, no. It's fine. Um, it, it could be that you're planning the family zoning board has the authority to issue dimensional variance from uh, these criteria.
Were we talking specialties permit? So we were all.
No, we, in relation, in relation to the special use permit. So let's say the uh, first one, paddock, B, keeping breeding domestic five side, minimum lot size two acres. That's this would expressly say, by the way, you get dimensional variance, if you only have one, you still have to meet the special use criteria and the dimensional variance criteria to have it be less than two. You're expressly saying you can get, because this says, it says it shall be. Well, that means it must be. Okay, but, but you can get a dimensional variance from. I think the planner is correct. It's, it would be maybe intuitive that you could do that anyway. I would agree, not, but not everyone agrees with you and me.
Okay, so where?
I guess you could, you could really, really simplify it and you could, you could have it be dimensional regulations for special use permit uses are determined by the zoning board of review or the planning board when the application is subject to unified development plan review pursuant to RI general law forty five twenty four, forty six point four, unless specifically set forth elsewhere in this title. And then you can say dimensional variances can be sought in relation to special use permits.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
Well said.
Okay, so that's a change to, I think we're in this forty point oh two oh, paragraph B, we're gonna change to that. All right, Talia.
But we're, but what did I even, I know that, I know what I just said, but I can't write it down as to what I just said a minute ago. My brain is so full of information. Dimensional variances can be pursued for special permit uses, for uses permitted by special uses.
Well, well, Chris said that the zoning and planning boards have the authority to i- issue. Well, Chris said that the zoning and planning boards have the authority to i- issue dimensional variances for special use permits.
Yes.
Yes, dimensional variances can be issued. For uses permitted by special use permit. So that would, yes, that would be what you'd be amending eighteen twenty zero point two zero B to read.
I like that. Awesome. Rest of the board, is good with that? Okay, so that takes care of dimensional regulations.
Well, I, I, you should make a motion. Recommending to the town council. That you would amend that. Based upon the comprehensive permit, excuse me, the comprehensive plan criteria and consistency with. Uh, the zoning enabling. And regulations, so. It needs to be more than just, yes, we like this.
I understand, I understand. You know, the discretion on that, we have something that we can turn into a motion. Then the, then the other thing is just the specialties permits and, and general. This, I mean, someone wants to make the motion regarding the amendment to eighteen twenty, at least we'll get that out of the way, about that. Then we do, then we do work on. Refining, uh, especially this permanent, uh, language. Or advisory, uh, I mean.
Isn't it all one and the same?
No, they're two separate sections of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I'm thinking if we just get, get this one out of the way in eighteen twenty, um, while it's all fresh and then. And then take them, then go and move on to the next action with these special use permit language. Somebody would like to make that motion. That makes sense.
We need a comprehensive plan, consistency findings, goals and policies.
Yes, we do.
I mean, you, you really only need one. You don't need to have like twenty-seven different components of the comprehensive plan that it complies with. You just have to achieve the very basic. Criteria, which is consistency with the comprehensive plan and. Consistency with forty-five, twenty-four, thirty. So if it's one from each of those things, that's acceptable. I mean, of course, if you have other things that you wanna add, also fine, but. You, you don't have to drive yourselves crazy trying to shoehorn. Various different components of the comprehensive plan into this.
I just thumbing through it quickly, that, that one seems, that one seems to be probably the most, um, uh, significant one, so I'm, I'd add the, the rest of the group is, uh. Good with that, um. I think we can just use that, policy E D four.
Would you like to make the recommendation that the board approve? The language was eighteen twenty point. Zero two something.
Yeah, eighteen twenty point zero two zero.
Amendment as recommended in draft of this evening between the board and the planner, um. That the zoning and planning boards will have the authority to issue the residential variance for special use. Permits, um, based on consistency with the comprehensive plan ED four policy and. I will then punch the purposes of zoning because I don't have that paper in front of me.
It's a single sheet, it should be right around where the, um. The comp plan component is. But if you wanna say. Two, providing for a range of uses and intensities of use appropriate to the character of the city or town and reflecting current and expected future needs. Or you could talk about some of the orderly growth and development components. Up to the board.
That the proposed adding to my. Motion that proposed amendments are also consistent with the following applicable purposes of zoning as identified in R I G L. Forty-five, one point thirty, number two.
Awesome, there was second. Any further discussion? Right, along favor? All right, that's eighteen twenty. All right, so eighteen sixteen.
So basically what you wanna think is why is having special use permit criteria good? Use that as the fundamental basis for the motion that you're going to make and. The consideration of why you're going to say certain components of the comprehensive plan, agree with this. And why purposes of zoning is applicable. So just think of that as kind of an overarching. Understanding of, of why. That's, that's your why. Why is it that special use permits are beneficial? What purpose do they serve? You know, and I can, I'll go back and I'll listen to the recording and I'll include the comments that you've made about dark side compliance. Uh, that will be part of. That might not be part of the direct recommendation itself, but it will be part of a memo that I give to the council that explains that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could, I mean, there, there's a whole bunch of just general information on why dark sky compliant. Lighting is, it's a good thing, right? I can, I can probably put something together and just personally send it off to the council too.
That's also.
I know some of the members of these, like Dan, has been on the planning board, he understands, but maybe it's not obvious and. What's probably also not obvious to them is that. With, with, with the new LED lighting, it costs. No more to comply with that ordinance and it actually provides. Better quality lighting for the businesses, so. I'll, I'll, I'll try to put something together too, but if you can send them something in the meantime.
It's like a video of a, uh. Great horned owl that smacked into the ski building at what Houston's because of the bright lights. And how they had to call a wildlife conservation was wanting to take the poor owl away, which is a good. You know, physical evidence for why you have. Dark skies because it interferes with birds migration.
I think that video might just make me sad. Good.
That's, that's good enough, yes.
And it, it happens on a, a greater scale. I think there was a PBS documentary that was done. About dark skies and something like in the, in the seasonal migration of. September to October to November, you have over a million birds passing almost every evening. You don't really think of that. They're flying at five thousand feet in the sky, but think about when they come to places like New York City. Thousands of them just actually get disorientated and they, they don't show you this a lot in the city, but. They have to clean the side yard every morning from the bird set, I mean, the skies like this on the migrations. So it's an important thing and if our community can do a small step towards helping. In the migratory flyway and also helping our local wildlife and. Meeting the desire of citizens that said they don't even want streetlights. That's another aspect. I remember that when we did the survey of the comp plan, like, people didn't want streetlights.
No, people don't want the nude developments. Occasionally you get people coming maybe from like cities where they expect it, but. Most, most people don't want them. They, they enjoy that dark sky.
Which is why our self-disregional construction standards have no standards for streetlights in them. In case anyone ever asks, yes.
Wow, thanks for the comp plan now for some policy directions and support this.
Oh, I would say ED four would also apply to this amendment.
Yeah, sure.
Because we're. Choosing to have these so we don't.
Right.
So we're. Encouraging the economic. I had ED seven.
That was policy ED four?
Michelle, you had ED seven.
I had ED one, Dan, ED seven, ED one's the home-based business enterprises. I think there could be some argument for that. Supporting success such as. I.
I mean, feasibly goal ED one. Promoting economic activities that enhance and complement the rural character and natural environment of Richmond. Now, you're, you're going to allow uses, but you're going to establish standards for those uses. That's, but, that's just my two cents.
And then you said, Michelle said, ED, ED seven review currently. Complement economic development goals, that, that's. Basically what we're doing. With this recommendation. I'm sorry, we said, we said ED seven, right?
Uh, so action ED seven or?
I'll, I'll see ED seven, I think, too, by the right, encourage new businesses to locate enrichment of real existing businesses.
What about, um, policy L three, which was ensure the development design, see the fast food, the town's structure.
All right.
That's why you asked for traffic studies.
So I think we have sufficient references if, uh, unless anybody has anything else that. So that's the comp.
That's the comp plan. Then the general purposes of zoning.
And usually these, these are which ones don't apply, so.
Karen. Two, four, one. Any of the ones under three? Apply. You know, if you, you want to have those.
Yeah, definitely one, two, oh, three, four, five, six. Pretty much most of them, and sixteen is kind of a little, you know, providing opportunities for reasonable accommodations, um. Not really, no.
Yeah. Fifteen.
Fifteen providing for procedures for administration of zones, definitely.
So do you want me to just write? One, two, all of three, four?
Fifteen.
Four. Fifteen.
Yeah. I think that's good.
All right, so I have one, two, three, four, and fifteen.
Three, four, fifteen. That works.
All right, so can that be made into a motion?
Please, if somebody would.
And you have a little cheat sheet in your specific. Component of this. Which says. I make recommendation to. I motion to recommend the proposed amendments to Richmond zoning ordinance, chapter eighteen sixteen to the town council. Um, and you'd identify the draft, which would just be the draft with the special use permit criteria. Um, and then you'd say the proposed amendment are consistent with the following components of the town of Richmond's comprehensive plan. And what you had was policy ED four, action ED seven, policy ED seven and policy LU three. And then you'd say the proposed amendments are also consistent with the following applicable purposes of zoning. And then you would just say one, two, four, one, two, three, four, and fifteen.
I will make the motion as our planner has just worked it in.
Yes, so moved.
Thank you.
Any? And any further discussion? All in favor? Awesome. Well, thanks, Talia, thanks for, yeah, all the information that you provided, so I know it's a lot, it's a lot too, it's.
I'm trying.
Don't feel like thinking out of the box with multiple options that.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to look at things from all different angles, I'm trying to. Give you as much food for thought as you can stomach, uh, or think about. You know, I, I really didn't know how the board was going to feel about that option, but I thought I'd give it a try. Just to see if that was something that you're interested in. You know, I understand why the board. Is interested in having special use permits. But again, trying to be a little brave.
Try to be creative with zoning.
Yes.
Yeah, I would say. And we would present this, you know, this advisory recommendation to, to the council. I mean, if they're still wrestling with some of the things and don't understand why we're. You know, recommending keeping these special use permits, so, you know, may, maybe a workshop, a joint workshop again with the council and the EC and. We just all sit around and kind of work this stuff out.
Yeah, you wanna.
Cause it's, 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 it's difficult to. You know, put all this on paper, we send it over as advisory recommendation. I know they're listening, you know, to our meetings also, but. Sometimes just sit down kind of like we do with the APod and other things, just kind of just hash it out with, you know, everybody in the same room, it's, it's a lot easier.
If you would like to task me with orchestrating a workshop or a joint meeting.
Yeah, I would say offer, offer that to the, to the council if they would like, you know, to. Have a workshop to discuss this further. Cause it is big, these are big, these are big changes to our, to our ordinances.
Yeah.
And it will affect economic development, it will affect, you know, managed growth in the town, so it's, it's important.
Yeah, so if the board. Yeah, so if the board wants to specifically direct me to do that, that would be great.
Oh, I would counsel maybe see how they received. Our additional homework assignment that they gave us and then. If it's not palatable to them, maybe then do the workshop.
Yeah.
Okay, I can just make a notation then in in the memo that I write that says the planning board would be very amenable to having a workshop if you were so inclined.
Yes.
Okay, not very amenable, just amenable.
Amenable.
You're not too enthusiastic, you're just enthusiastic. Yes.
I'm sure they're, I mean, they're they're gonna they're gonna listen to this meeting too, so they'll all understand that. Gary, sir.
Gary Parker, Chair of the E D C, uh thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh and thank you, uh actually, Miss Hess, pretty much for uh for the idea of just kind of sticking with what we had. With the special use permits, I think that's the right course of action. Um in terms of uh ongoing forward recommendations, you know, we, our meeting, I thought was very fruitful. I think a workshop might be fruitful if the board, if the council still doesn't understand the logic behind some of this stuff. Um but you can, one one of the things our charter, our charter duty as the E C is to continue to provide. Your board uh and the town council and the other boards as well with some sort of input as to what we think is the the R R the economic. Development outcomes from zoning matters of zoning, um so. So I think it's great that uh again, this has great idea, just. More more stuff is coming down from the state capital and so just kind of stick with what you got. But one thing the E D C does is constantly analyze this because we are looking at things on the ground. And so I I I just clarify one thing, um E D C, and you'll find this, sir, when you go to rich task force, because we're pretty much. You know, chief by J L and that with the task force on strategies. And interesting enough, though, developed independently, but they both seem the same, so it's kind of there and there. You're gonna find that we're not looking at the limits class, the limits class mini mall, you know, we're not looking at the big banks, we're not looking, we're not trying to attract that. It's actually a coherent strategy to develop the villages, and so I think reverting back to these special use permits, especially in Shannon. And some of the other other locations, there was, I I think that's really the right move, so thank you very much for that, uh we appreciate that. But we will continue to provide our analysis to you um. And give some some, you know, obviously supporting documentation as to why we think these would be the objective economic outcomes. Um I do know that the traffic study issue, uh you know, one one thing we've talked about, if I might, sir, um. But in fact, I think we even spoke about it in our meeting, um did 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 Amazon D H L and U P S ever do the traffic study? Now, has it increased our traffic by an order of magnitude? Probably. And so has there been an increasing collisions and risk? Maybe risk outcomes, no, no collision, you know, we chief police, chief police hasn't exactly, you know, lamented that increase. So I think when we, one of the big things that we spoke about this too, ma'am, one of the things about the traffic studies, there has to be some. Some context to it, you know, when we think about a large development, of course, it makes sense from a kinetic perspective. But, you know, looking at the previous ordinance, sir, as you know, uh. You know, uh probably a nursery school had a traffic study, but a transportation hub did not. And so that, so right there, it's like, what what are we trying to achieve here? So I think. Uh having done some research on traffic studies that they know that, you know, the professional one with a stamp can cost between three and ten thousand bucks. For a nursery school do that, that might do, but but again. As we, I think, I I'm very grateful, sir, that, you know, taking a look at these again. And as time goes on, we will provide some information, you know, provide our recommendations to you and your board.
And we we've we've had some, you know, that whole traffic study and like the impact it has on small businesses, we 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 understand that, and there's. There are a lot of small businesses that we, you know, recently had come before us and we have not had them do. Traffic studies because we 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 looked at it with an understanding based on, you know, the knowledge of the board, that it it wasn't something that we felt was going to be an issue. Yes.
And it's also location, location, location.
No doubt.
Who exact businesses may go in two different places, and you may say this one is a critical choke point. In our traffic network, we need a study of impact and then one may be in a prep place, you know, that's perfectly fine and. We as the local land use experts know that it doesn't need a traffic study. Now, so location, location, location.
And and I think that's the kind of dexterity that the E D C is is grateful that we see that, because of course, I think even the Mr. Zangary pointed it out. Looking at looking at an ordinance and one sees traffic study, if there's not language there that says, oh, by the way, this is negotiable. To to use a a a kind of a loose term. Then then the person might go, oh, boy, I'm locked, I can't, I can't, I can't afford a ten thousand dollar study, I'm not gonna do it, and we never know. We never know, and it says, no, we're just looking at that because that's one of our perspectives from the from the E D C perspectives, we have to look at what's actually happening on the ground.
And it's still the ability to get a motive away.
Right, if they know that, if they if they know that and that's clear, then of course, but uh but if they don't know that, if it's not in language. Then we never know if we've turned away someone who could have started a business when they didn't.
That's where the E D C comes in, that's where you guys gotta get the word out, promoted and market the town, right?
Oh, well, we can do that, oh, sure, if sure, if we if if the town council wants us to just advertise, oh, sure, everything's negotiable, you got it.
Yeah, I don't want to go to that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, is the E D C does know this already, because we have to talk to business owners who have who have run into some issues when it comes to these matters. Because they don't know them, because it's not black and white, so um yes, we'll provide that feedback to you.
Can I ask a question while you're there? Um first off, thank you for your recommendation, the letter, that was really helpful, um. I had a question about like procedurally, you're you had a recommendation for the guest cottages, just an example. Where you and I, maybe you can clarify, but we don't have, we just prohibit them. And so when a recommendation like that comes across our table, do we, how does that work? Do we? Look at it, does someone, because we're looking at this as a whole, or does that have to then go first go somewhere else, then come to us, like how? How would something, I don't know who I'm asking, anybody, how is something like that if we saw a recommendation like that from? In this instance.
So basically, how that would work is you would get an application from someone or you would get. Yeah, information from someone that says, hey, I want to amend this section of the zoning ordinance. If it's internal, then it can be handled a little bit differently than if it's from an external party, um but you would provide. The same kind of advisory to the town council for that as you would for this particular kind of exercise. Because you're doing the same thing, you're amending the zoning ordinance, or you're or proposing an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
And if I'm saying this for chairman, well, like Miss Hess said, you you've got some sort of better expertise in terms of just basic landing and use. If uh if the E D C independently without an applicant, because that's part of what we're trying to do, is look at these scenarios before an app. It's at that, it's your desk, is to look at that and say, hey, you know, planning board, this is what we recommend and why. Is there any negotiating space there? Is 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 there too much risk? What were the risks that that were mitigated? Why was the prohibition there in the first place? Those are all valid questions, and so. We're just grateful that we could have that dialogue, and I think when you, like, thank you, sir, for going, I know I'm speaking for the rich task. My friends on the task force, you being there is gonna be great for them, quite frankly, sir.
I will say on that, I mean, if you have an experience.
Well, it's 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 similar to what we talked about, you see, it's just that they're not looking at. Their their objectives are to look at the what future possibilities are. We on the E D C as part of our charter and regulatory, you know, requirements to look into policies themselves. So we're trying to do, we're doing sort of blocking attack from while they're looking at the. Their good vision areas, but we both might have the same vision now through the villages. So, well, sir, thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Gary. Right, any announcements, informational?
It would be wonderful if one day we stopped doing all these uh reactions to statutory changes. Where we could sit down and do some planning and look at things for ourselves, you know.
Like you work for the state.
Well, the land use commission that's in charge of everything in the kitchen sink, as I describe it under the uh. The speaker, they have another year to go and the rumor on the floor of the house is that more changes are coming this session. So we shall see, but if the speaker decides to run for governor, that would change.
Yes.
One brief announcement is that you have more proposed amendments to land development and subdivision regulations to look forward to at your upcoming meetings. Yes, I did. You have to be prepared.
Alright, someone like to make a motion to adjourn, so, yeah, you all favor? Pick your second, whatever.
Who seconded? The motion to return?
Me.
Okay.